All right, thank you, Mr. Denfeld. Well, good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, March 16, 2021. It is 7:02 PM. And this is another city council meeting for the City of Edina in the virtual world. So welcome to the March 16 meeting of the Edina City Council. And the meeting is being held electronically to comply with the governor's Stay Safe Minnesota Order and to ensure the safety of all residents and staff. All members of the city council, staff and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. And before we begin, there's a few things that we'd like to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate, at least in some portions of the meeting. As you all know, the city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. It's important you know that all public hearing comments are read before we take action. You do not need to submit the same feedback in any other way. All communication is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there's only going to be one opportunity to call in to comment via telephone, and that's during the community comment portion of the agenda as we have no public hearing scheduled this evening. You'll be allowed to speak about anything that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. So if you want to call in with those limitations and call in for community comment, the number is 800-374-0221. And the conference ID number is 803-8119. When we get to that portion of the agenda, I'll let you know again what the 800 number is and the conference ID number. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our city manager, Scott Neal, will be the timer and he'll let you know when you get to the three-minute mark. And then you need to wrap up your comments. So thanks in advance for working with us as we conduct this meeting online using different types of software and almost 20 people participating from different places. We hope there won't be any issues, as you all know, but we will assure you that we'll do our best to overcome anything that happens during the meeting that we have from a technological difficulty standpoint, and we'll get it fixed as quickly as we can. So having made those introductory remarks, I will now call the meeting to order and I will ask Clerk Allison to conduct roll. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hufflin?
Here. The next item on the agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance. I will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the meeting agenda? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds. The approval of the meeting agenda is shown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to approval of the meeting agenda. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hufflin?
Aye. The form of meeting agenda that was published and in front of us this evening is approved. We are now going to go to community comment. And again, that number, if you want to call in to talk to us about something that's not on the agenda tonight, not scheduled for a future public hearing, call 800-374-0221. The conference ID is 803-8119. 803-8119. An operator will ask your name and address, and then you'll press star one. An operator will put you in the queue to speak and Director Benarott, our communications director, will bring you into the council. And you'll have three minutes to speak, as I mentioned earlier, and Manager Neal will be your timer. Director Benarott, do we have anybody in the queue for community comment?
Good evening, Mayor Hufflin, members of the council. We do have at least one person listening in intercall, but I do not yet show that one of them would like to speak. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol and then the number one. That indicates to the operator that you would like to speak. I'm still not seeing any movement in that area because there is a slight delay in the broadcast and we want to make sure people have enough time to call in. I'd recommend that we wait about a minute before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:07, so I will come back to you when we have a caller or at 7:08, whichever comes first.
Thank you, Director Benarott.
It is now 7:08, and I still don't have anyone indicating a desire to speak, so I think it's safe for you to move on with your agenda.
Thank you, Director Benarott. We will do that. After community comment, at each council meeting, we have the city manager's response to any community comments that took place in the meeting before. Manager Neal, I don't recall any from the last meeting. Do I have a faulty recollection or do you have anything that you want to cover?
No, Your Honor, your recollection is correct. We had no community comment at our previous meeting.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have several items on the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item? From the consent agenda? Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves?
Second.
Member Pierce seconds. The approval of consent agenda items? Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hufflin?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda portion of the main agenda are approved. Just one notation there, the last item, 6J, 6I, I guess it is, Resolution 2021-29, Accepting Donations. It's always nice to give folks recognition that are donating to the community. And this particular reporting period, two donations to the Park and Rec Department. Kerry Sealy Zirzak donated $2,200 for a bench at Centennial Lakes. I expected it's a memorial bench. Thank you, Kerry Zirzak, for that. And then the Edina Garden Council gave a total of $4,500 to the Park and Recreation Department for three new park benches for the Tranquility Garden that's being created at Artisan Acres. So our thanks again to the Edina Garden Council. It does such a fabulous job for the City of Edina. Now we'll move on to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And we have James Lawrence, who is our new Metropolitan Air Force Commissioner with us, and he's going to be introduced to the council and the community by Scott Neal, our city manager. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my honor this evening to introduce our new MAC Commissioner, James Lawrence. James was appointed by Governor Tim Walz in February of 2021, so just a month ago. Mr. Lawrence is chairman of Lake Harriet Capital LLC, a private investment firm. Previously, Mr. Lawrence served as chairman of Rothschild North America and earlier as the CEO of Rothschild North America and co-head of the global investment banking at Rothschild from 2010 to 2015. Mr. Lawrence is currently a non-executive director of Avnet Inc., Smurfette Kappa Group, and AerCap, and until 2018, IAG. Since 1990, Mr. Lawrence has served on 17 public company boards, several private company boards, and numerous nonprofit boards. In his various roles, he has been advisor or principal in numerous mergers, activist campaigns, acquisitions, joint ventures, and divestitures. Mr. Lawrence earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in economics from Yale University and an MBA with distinction from Harvard Business School. Please welcome our MAC Commissioner, James Lawrence.
Well, welcome, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you for serving the City of Edina. We look forward to your comments.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here with you, Mayor, and with the city councils. So thank you very much for the invitation.
All right. Well, we look forward to having you represent the city and the district that you are representing is a little bit broader than our community. We have an alignment of interests, I think, in making sure that the airport functions as the economic engine that it has historically been. And I think your guidance there from your background will be very valuable in restoring confidence to travelers and also getting that portion of our state economy running well again. And then also, as we move along through life and air traffic resurges, I think having somebody there who's going to help protect our interests in terms of airplane noise and that oversight is critical. So thank you for that in advance. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Since I'm new to the city council, it would be helpful if you could tell me sort of what your territory is that you represent and how often the MAC meets and just some basics of MAC function.
Well, I'm not going to be able to give it to you in depth because I too, as was mentioned, have only a month into it. But I believe that we meet once a month. Of course, everything has been shaken up with the pandemic, but I'm pretty sure about that. As the mayor said, I represent Edina, but also much of South Minneapolis, which happens to be where I live. Our area is called District C. And the whole metro area is sort of divvied up into geographic territories. And then the governor appoints someone for each of the territories who lives in that territory. So I live in District C, which includes the Edina and my own South Minneapolis. I should also just point out, as I was saying to the mayor earlier, I am directly underneath the flight path into MSP. I live on Lake Harriet on the east side, and planes will fly in and planes will fly out every day. So I have a very keen appreciation for the concerns about the noise which comes from a healthy functioning airport. I'd be happy to answer any other questions which are, you know, I am able to. So I'm listening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Member Jackson, for making that inquiry. If anyone else on the council wished to make an inquiry of new council member Lawrence? All right, well, thank you so much, Mr. Lawrence, for being with us this evening. And as I mentioned before we started the meeting, we look forward to having you back when we can be together face to face. And I think our community would appreciate that as well.
Well, I would very much appreciate the opportunity to come to a live and in-person city council meeting. So if you are unlike many politicians and you can actually keep your word, I would appreciate that invitation as soon as the city hall is open.
Well, I'll try to live up to that promise. I think I can do that. And then you should also know that I'm on the Transportation Advisory Board of the Met Council, which has budgetary capital improvement oversight over your budget at the MAC. So we may be interacting in other ways as well.
Well, I look forward to that in addition, having had such pleasant experience with council tonight.
All right, very good. And it's reciprocal. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
May I sign off now? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, you can go ahead and sign off if you so desire. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Got to get to my wife and dinner.
All right, good evening.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Goodbye. The other items we have on special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda this evening are informational items only, starting with Nick Baller, our Traffic Safety Coordinator, giving us the 2020 Traffic Safety Summary Report. Mr. Baller, are you there?
Thanks, Mayor. Maybe I'll just kick off a few comments.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, the next three are informational, just like you mentioned, and it's really an opportunity for us to share the Pedestrian Cycle Safety Fund with Andrew Scipione, and then new to the group is Grace Hancock doing the sustainability kind of programs update. So modeling the CAS fund after the PACS fund, what we do usually in March, given the council an update of what we're doing with those franchise fees. But this first topic that Nick's going to present is from the ETC. That was a recommendation from them a few years ago to give the council a yearly update with the Traffic Safety Summary Report. So hand it over to Nick to give you this year's report.
Thank you, Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor Hufflin, and all you council members. I hope that I have everything up and visible. If not, please feel free to say something. But again...
It is visible, Nick, and we can hear you as well.
Okay, that's great. And if you end up having any issues, please let me know. So again, my name is Nick Baller, and I'm the city's Traffic Safety Coordinator. And today I will be presenting the 2020 Traffic Safety Summary Report. And in this report tonight, I will be reviewing overall the statistics along with some trends that we have been noticing based on our traffic safety review process. So in a quick summary, how would traffic safety or how our process works is once a request is submitted to me, the Traffic Safety Coordinator, data needs to be collected and analyzed before eventually being presented to the Traffic Safety Committee. The committee reviews all these requests and makes a recommendation that gets then also reviewed by the Transportation Commission for review and comment, and then eventually brought forth to city council for final approval. And throughout this whole process, I'm remaining in contact with these requesters who have made their request, so they're in the know of how it's all proceeding. When we receive traffic safety requests, we break them down into one of these five categories, which include parking and signage, intersection control, traffic calming, where this, the overall goal might be to just slow vehicles down. Then we have pedestrian safety, where this can be implementing new crosswalks or upgrading our current crosswalks. And anything that doesn't fall in line with these first four requests are classified as other. So an example, this might be for updated lane layouts or pavement markings, anything along those lines. So in 2020, there were a total of 157 requests that were submitted, and residents and commuters can submit requests by phone, mail, email, the city's website, and even the Edina 311 app. There were 158 requests that were reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee. Forty-nine of those were parking and signage, which were the most, followed by traffic calming at 36, pedestrian safety at 34, intersection control at 21, and then the final 18 were other. You can see that there's not a perfect correlation between the amount of requests received and reviewed. This can be due to requests received in winter months that might not be able to be reviewed until the following year due to weather concerns. Out of all the actions or out of all the requests that were reviewed in 2020, there were 21 A items where staff recommended approval for change. Ten of these were parking signage, which included removing on-street parking on Cornelia Drive between Mavel and West 70th Street to help improve the overall school operations. There were seven pedestrian safety approvals, which included installing a crosswalk on West 54th Street at Brookview Avenue. And there are also two approved traffic calming items, one of which was to install a 30 mile per hour speed limit sign for eastbound traffic on West 60th Street and through and from France Avenue. This was due to the change of speed limits from France on to West 60th from 35 down to 30 miles per hour. There were also 20 D items, which were where the staff recommended no changes, and 117 D items, which are classified as items where the Traffic Safety Coordinator is able to handle the entire request. An example, this would be a request for a stop sign at an intersection where no warrants came very close at all to be met. So because of this, the entire committee did not need to review that item. We're able to geolocate where requests are received, and then we ended up looking at them in the four different quadrants of the city using Highway 100 and Highway 62 as our border. In Northwest Edina, we received 32 requests, and with the highest amount of requests in this area were pedestrian safety at 12 of those 32. This quadrant received nine less requests than in 2018 and 2019. And you can see that along Interlock and Boulevard and in the Grantview area, that is where a high number of those pedestrian safety requests were submitted. In Southwest Edina, there were 24 requests that were submitted, with parking and signage leading the way at 10 of those 24. This quadrant received 10 less requests than in 2019. And one of these reasons might be due to the COVID-19 pandemic, as there has been less in-person schooling, especially with the number of public schools in this quadrant. In Southeast Edina, there were 25 requests that were submitted with parking and signage receiving the most at eight of those 25. And this quadrant received one more than previously in 2019. You can see that there's a good amount of requests that are received in both the Southdale area along with the county roadways of France Avenue, along with York Avenue and Zerxes. In Northeast Edina, we received 76 requests out of 157. The most requests here were intersection control at 29 of those 76. And this quadrant received 14 more requests compared to 2019. One of the reasons for this might be due to the 2020 street reconstruction project of West 58th Street from Woodville Avenue to Zerxes Avenue. So you can see that there are a lot of requests that bordered along this project area. There are also a higher number of requests as well in the 50th and France area, too. We're also able to look at when requests are received throughout the calendar year. And you can see from the months from May through July, this was where the most requests were submitted. One reason for this might be due to the end of the governor's stay-at-home order, which happened to be lifted in the middle of May. And also, this is when a lot of our street projects are taking place as well, so that's new habits that people aren't used to. There ended up not being any significant increase in requests in September, likely due to the virtual schooling that has been taking place compared to the previous couple years that we've been reviewing these. And as the year went on, parking signage in the green fairly remained consistent, kind of besides the month of December. So after all that, I'd just like to open up for any questions, and I appreciate, I appreciate all taking your time.
All right, questions? Comments? Yes?
I've got a question. I think you're the person to ask about this. We've received a number of comments of concerns at 58th and France. Can you give us an update on what the situation is there?
I'll do that, Councilmember Jackson.
Okay, great, thank you.
58th and France is the intersection that was related to that construction project from last year. The traffic signals were placed in the wrong location last fall. We had to remove those systems. So right now, our contractor is ready to install the new one. We're just waiting for approval from Hennepin County on the final plans. So they've already had Excel move some guy wires, so did Comcast. We're all set up to go and just waiting for a final approval from the county, and we're going to go. We think it'll take three to six weeks. We're hoping they're here this week to get final approval from them this week. And from there, it's three to six weeks to complete not only the traffic signals, but also the, there's some additional concrete work by moving those things.
Terrific. Thank you so much.
Other questions for Mr. Baller?
Yeah, I have one. Yeah, Mr. Baller, thank you. It's interesting. I noticed that the number of requests, the traffic safety requests, traffic calming seems to have jumped in 2020, far more so on a percentage basis than any other. And I find that interesting. Your requests there, what do they basically pertain to?
So one of the reasons why traffic calming in 2020 might have increased is likely due to at least the street reconstruction project that has taken place. There were a lot of vehicles that were not following proper detours. So these vehicles were traveling at higher rates of speed trying to make up for their lost time of finding their own detoured route. So that's just maybe one way here, but we're also seeing that there is a slight trend of increase in terms of these traffic calming requests. And, you know, we'll see kind of how, as, you know, we continue to keep collecting this data over the years, if this is something that will level off or if it's something that will continue to grow.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Baller, I noticed in Table 1 that traffic calming, you know, you, I think with respect to the number of inquiries that you had, the number of items reviewed, you, on 6% of them, the way I read your table here is that you had a recommended action on those requests involving traffic calming. Is that the way, the proper way to read the table?
Let me just check here. So based on how items are reviewed compared to when they are received, they might not be able to be reviewed in the same calendar year based on what the overall request is. So if it does look like that traffic calming requests are not approved compared to the number of, you know, what's being received, that might be one of those reasons, too. But yeah, it's also...
Yeah, yeah. Dick, Mayor was asking about the A, B, and D items. So yes, Mayor, on Table 1, the traffic calming, we approved. Two of the 36 requests were approved, so 6% of them.
Yep, two of the 36 requests for some type of action or improvement on traffic calming were approved.
Exactly. And I think that's due to that, what Nick said. Cars were driving through the Chauvin and Straka our neighborhoods, trying to get around that 58th Street project. So people would call and say, do something. Well, we know it's a temporary condition. You know, please be patient. We're working with our contractors to try to limit that, but people didn't follow the assigned detours, and that's where we saw the higher-than-normal traffic calming requests in that quadrant of town.
The other thing I noticed, I thought was kind of interesting, and Nick, you can comment on this. It seemed like the vast majority of the concerns in those five different categories, you handled them. Under category D, there were like 117 requests that you handled individually. So what were some of the more frequent items that, you know, you dealt with, with some kind of a positive outcome? Or did people leave after conversations with you on this? Let me put it this way. On the 117 items that you handled, did you keep any kind of data internally that showed, you know, the level of satisfaction by folks that had expressed concern that you dealt with individually? That makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say yes. With every request that is received, I'm keeping notes on both what the request is, what eventually the result becomes. And then I keep notes in regarding, you know, just how that was brought to the result. There are a lot of times where, you know, the result is not the, you know, requested result from the resident or the requister, such as if someone wants a stop sign at an intersection, if it doesn't meet warrants, you know, they might not be, you know, very satisfied with that result compared to maybe, you know, that it was reviewed in this type of process.
All right. Good. Well, thank you for fielding all of those inquiries and concerns that people had in our community. All right. Any other questions for Nick Baller on the Traffic Safety Summary Report? Thank you, Mr. Baller. On the, uh, traffic safety summary report. Thank you, Mr. Baller.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland.
Go on to the, uh, pedestrian cyclist safety fund summary report. And, uh, Director Milner, did you want to say anything there before we turn it over to Andrew Cipione?
Let's turn it right over to Andrew. He's the star of this one.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Get my presentation up here. Uh, so tonight I'll be presenting the two thousand twenty pedestrian and cyclist safety fund summary report. Uh, as you may recall, the PAX Fund was created in two thousand twelve and collects revenue from utility franchise fees. Today, it generates about one point two million dollars per year, which is used exclusively for improvements to our non-motorized transportation network. When the fund was created, one of the conditions was that staff would report annually to the Transportation Commission and to City Council on the expenditures and proposed projects. So that's exactly what we're doing here tonight. The ETC received this presentation at their last regular meeting and the report that's in your packet tonight is also available on the city's website. And here's a screenshot from the website that gives a brief explanation of the PAX Fund, uh, the proposed projects for the current year and the link to the, uh, last year's report. In two thousand twenty, there was approximately one point eight million dollars available in the fund. This included almost six hundred thousand dollars in rollover funds from two thousand nineteen. Um, of this one point six million was spent on pedestrian and bicycle-related items, which is over eighty-two, and over eighty-two percent of that was specifically on, um, new ped and bike facilities, sidewalks, bike lanes, trails, those kinds of things. About nine thousand dollars was spent on maintenance of existing ped and bike facilities. And then seventy thousand dollars was spent, uh, on final payments for previously completed projects. The administrative costs last year totaled about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, which included professional services, equipment, supplies, and the salary of the transportation planner. And now we'll get into the specific projects that were constructed last year through the PAX Fund. Um, a big one is the West Fifty-Eighth Street sidewalks from Wooddale to Zerxes Avenue. Uh, recall, these were constructed as part of the larger roadway reconstruction project. Uh, the PAX Fund, as part of this project, the PAX Fund also paid for, um, a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at the Pamela Park entrance. As part of this project, there also was a sidewalk constructed on France Avenue between Fifty-Eighth and Fifty-seventh Street, uh, on the east side. The sidewalk was petitioned by residents, so we added it into this project, given its location. PAX Fund also paid for or contributed to the City Hall Improvement Project, which included a raised crosswalk and bike racks. Um, this, the project also included, um, relocation of the ADA parking stalls and EV charging stations. And those, uh, costs were, uh, supplemented by the, by the CAST Fund. We also have the Valley View, Valley View Road sidewalk from Moxon Road to Mark Terrace Drive. This is the final component of the, uh, active routes to school sidewalk recommendation from Gleason to, uh, Gleason to Raymar. As part of the Fiftieth and France Paver Replacement Project, the PAX Fund contributed to some pedestrian curb ramps. And then, uh, we had another sidewalk on France Avenue, uh, adjacent to M Health Fairview Southdale Hospital. Then we had a sidewalk on Vernon Avenue, uh, from Arcadia to Highway one hundred. A sidewalk on West Seventy-Fourth Street to fill in a gap between, uh, Public Works Facility and Bush Lake Road. A shared use path on Tracy Avenue from Highway sixty-two to Valley Lane. A sidewalk on Valley View Road from Valley Lane to Creek Valley. This is another sidewalk that was petitioned by residents. And then, um, we have some new bike racks up at the Edina Liquor Store at Fiftieth and France. Uh, we've got seven new racks there. It's capacity for fourteen bikes in the district. PAX Fund contributed to some pedestrian, accessible pedestrian signals at the intersection of Fiftieth and Halifax. And then the PAX Fund also contributed to the, uh, shared use path on Benton Avenue as part of the bridge redecking project. Uh, this project widened the existing sidewalk into more of a shared use facility. Looking ahead to what's being proposed for the current year, we have the Hanson Road and West Fifty-Sixth Street sidewalks, which are proposed as part of the Melody Lake, Grandview, Birchcrest Street Reconstruction Project. We also have Beard Avenue sidewalk and West Fifty-Fourth Street Bike Boulevard as part of the Creek Knoll Street Reconstruction Project. As part of the Grandview TIF improvements Project, uh, there's a shared use path proposed on Eden Avenue. And then we have another sidewalk on France Avenue from Fuller Street to West Fifty-seventh Street. Uh, another sidewalk on France Avenue between Fifty-Eighth Street and Sixtieth Street. The first phase of a shared use path on McCully Trail from Valley View Road to Indian Hills Road. Some shared use paths adjacent to Highlands Park. And some, uh, pedestrian improvements at the intersection of France Avenue and Sixty-Ninth Street that we're working, partnering with the county on. In two thousand twenty-two, uh, we're proposing, we're looking at sidewalk and bike lanes on Blake Road as part of a state aid street reconstruction project, as well as sidewalks and bike lanes on Lynn Avenue and Grimes Avenue as part of the Morningside Street Reconstruction Project. We have the Olinger Boulevard sidewalk, which was also a recommendation of our active routes to school plan. And then the final sidewalk on France Avenue between Sixtieth Street and, uh, Highway sixty-two. This would completely fill in the current sidewalk gap on the east side of France Avenue, uh, which we are trying to prioritize ahead of the E-line, uh, Bus Rapid Transit Service, um, starting. We have the second phase of the McCully Trail shared use path connecting all the way out to Gleason Road. And then some additional pedestrian improvements at, uh, France Avenue and Park Lawn. As I mentioned earlier, the ETC was given an opportunity to comment on the annual report at their February eighteenth regular meeting. Uh, some of their comments are shown here. They, they noted that there were no projects proposed on Valley View Road under Highway sixty-two. Staff noted that Mindot has a, a bridge redeck project that's anticipated for the year two thousand twenty-six. And as part of the preliminary planning for that project, um, staff is advocating for improved pedestrian and bicycle, bicycle facilities underneath that bridge, which we note is a, is currently a significant gap in our bicycle network. The commission also noted that there's a significant variation in cost per lineal foot among the two thousand twenty projects. Uh, for example, here you can see Fifty-Eighth Street sidewalks, uh, were constructed at about eleven dollars per lineal foot, whereas the Valley View sidewalk was constructed for about five hundred and six dollars per lineal foot. Uh, there's several factors that impact the cost of these projects, including the scope, the existing topography where they're being constructed, the traffic control that's required, and then mobilization costs. Um, Valley View Road sidewalk, for example, included significant grading and significant retaining walls, which increased the project costs similar to, um, other sidewalks on Valley View Road or on Interlock and Boulevard. Whereas the Fifty-Eighth Street sidewalks, as I mentioned, were constructed as part of the street reconstruction project. So we were able to, uh, achieve some economics of scale as part of that. And with that, I will, uh, stand for any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cipione. Uh, questions or comments from council members?
So I've got a couple of questions. One is, thank you. Um, on the Fifty-Sixth Street sidewalks, has that decision been finalized? In the Melody Lake reconstruction?
The scope of the project was, uh, decided by the council at the public hearing in December. What wasn't decided was the assessments. So we'll be coming back in, in April for that discussion with the city council on potentially a, a contract and those preliminary assessments.
Okay, because the, um, the neighbors there have continued to, um, to ask questions about that. And, and so it's closed. It's, it's all been decided.
It was decided by the council, yep, in December, what was included in that scope.
All right, thank you. And then with the Eden Avenue project, um, is that funded by TIF? You said it's within the Grandview District. I guess I didn't understand that went by rather quickly. Is that funded with the PAX funds or, or how is that funded?
I can speak to that one, too, Andrew.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Eden Avenue, that was the one we, we went in front of the HRA to ask to use the, exactly right, Councilmember Jackson. The TIF dollars associated with that, uh, TIF district in there were coming to a close of the district. And if we don't use the funds, uh, they go back. It's going to be felt like there are some great public improvements that could be done on Eden Avenue, creating an intersection into the Grandview parking ramp and wayfinding in the district.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much.
Other questions for either Mr. Cipione or Director Milner?
Uh, I just, um, yeah, thank you. Um, just a little bit more detail, um, if you would, on the cost variability. That, um, slide really surprised me, the difference of eleven dollars per, per lineal foot to five hundred and six, I think it was, per lineal foot. Um, and so I'd be interested in your view more broadly across the community. How varied do you think those costs will be? And, um, do you, your feeling on, um, the, how they might impact our ability to complete the rest of the connectivity, um, that the, the plan calls for?
Sure. Thank you for the question. Um, I would say those two examples I gave are probably the, the far ends of the spectrum as far as the kind of the least expensive and the most expensive, um, types of these projects that we've constructed. There's plenty of other projects that fall kind of somewhere in the middle. But really, the, a, a huge contributor to that variability in cost is whether or not these projects are being done as part of larger-scale projects. In the past, we've kind of, we've tended to focus on building new sidewalks and bike facilities as part of our street reconstruction projects so that we can try and get as much, as many new facilities built, um, with this fund as we can, as quickly as we can. The downside to doing that is then we're only prioritizing the areas that are up for street reconstruction. So we're, we're really starting to look at what other, what are our other priorities in terms of providing connections to schools, providing connections to, um, to transit facilities, to parks. Um, you know, some of these, these types of amenities and services that our residents have really, uh, expressed an interest in, in wanting to take advantage of. So it's a, it's definitely a balancing act between trying to, um, get our, kind of our whole comprehensive network built as quickly as we can, um, but also trying to prioritize projects, um, at the right time.
You know, just that Andrew's been working on a process to lay these out with an equity lens, you know, looking at some other factors to make sure that we're spreading out these funds across the entire city and doing that in a fair and equitable manner.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I would characterize that more as a geographic balance issue as opposed to an equity issue. But at least that's the way we characterize it at the TAB. Equity is a totally different discussion, but, um, because we're working on equity issues at the TAB. But anyway, just, uh, some food for thought for you. Other, other comments? I did think, Mr. Cipione, that, uh, you know, seeing the prior report from Mr. Baller where we've been escalating concerns on traffic calming, and I think Member Anderson might have alluded to that, uh, that it really reinforces the, the decisions the council made uh, quite a while ago now about establishing this PAX Fund and then using franchise fees to, uh, support it. Because we're really getting some good work done over time in terms of the projects around the community. And, uh, so I think that this will only enhance pedestrian safety and, uh, apparently, hopefully reduce those concerns over time, too, as we get more and more of a sidewalk network built out. So there's some good work being done here. There's some, it's really, I, I think enjoyable to see your annual report to see what we've done in the prior year and what we've got upcoming as we try to create this whole entire system, fill in this, uh, system that we've designed with, uh, in, actually, you know, make it real, make it actual. Make it come to life. So thank you. Any other comments, questions from council members? Okay. Thanks for that report. And then our last, uh, update is coming from Grace Hancock, our sustainability coordinator. We met with her at five-thirty, uh, on the possible creation of a sustainability program for the city. And she's going to give us a two thousand twenty state of sustainability programs update. Ms. Hancock, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Thank you, council members, for having me once again this evening. Um, I am going to share a short update on the state of sustainability initiatives in Edina this evening, uh, mostly taking a bird's eye view. Um, ahead of this presentation, you received a summary report on the city's Conservation and Sustainability Fund, two thousand twenty financial position, as well as a report on Edina's two thousand twenty building energy benchmarking results. During our time tonight, I'd like to contextualize these two programs into Edina's broader commitment to sustainability, um, sharing updates on greenhouse gas emission, emission reduction goals, and looking ahead to some exciting work on the horizon that will accelerate the city's effort toward a more sustainable and resilient future. I'll mostly focus on city operations metrics tonight, acknowledging that we will receive more community-wide information soon with the Climate Action Plan kickoff. So first, a little bit of history to situate tonight's presentation. Um, Edina has a longstanding commitment to sustainability, some of which is here on the screen. Uh, the goals that we're working toward today are at the bottom of this slide. In two thousand seven, the city committed to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions thirty percent from its baseline of, uh, from two thousand seven by the year two thousand twenty-five. Long-term, the city committed to reducing its greenhouse gas emissions, um, emissions by, by eighty percent by two thousand fifteen. And here are some key terms and definitions to ground the city's sustainability work. Um, tonight, we will talk about mitigation, which is, um, the actions that we can take to reduce emissions that cause climate change. Um, and to date, the city has focused on mitigation. But I want to talk a little bit about adaptation tonight as well, which are actions that we can take to manage the risks of climate change impacts. Um, I want us to think more holistically about what it means to be a livable city and connect the work that the city has done to adapt, to, uh, move us closer to the concept of climate resilience. So mitigation and adaptations are two side of the, two sides of the same resilience coin. Um, and resilience is, uh, something like the capacity of individuals, institutions, and systems within a city to survive, adapt, and thrive, no matter what. So with that grounding, let's dive in. So first things first, how are we doing on greenhouse gas emissions? These two graphs are pulled from the Regional Indicators Initiatives and are estimates of community emissions in Edina. Overall, we have seen a reduction of fourteen percent, um, from two thousand seven to two thousand eight to eighteen, so just about eleven years. Note that emissions generally come from three primary sources in the urban environment, transportation, building energy use, and waste management. So transportation, transportation accounts for nearly forty percent of emissions in Edina. The city recently passed a green fleet policy which aims to accelerate the transition of city-owned vehicles to electric and more efficient options. Um, you can see some photos here of the chargers and the city electric vehicles that, um, are buzzing around Edina these days. In the table, you can see that in the last ten years, the city has reduced transportation emissions from city-owned vehicles by ten percent. Um, and we expect that this improvement will increase more rapidly over the next ten years, given the growth in the electric vehicle sector. City buildings. So you have the full building energy benchmarking report in your council agenda packet that includes both city and commercial buildings. But I wanted to highlight a few notes on our city building stock here. First, despite targeted energy efficiency improvements, overall greenhouse gas emissions for city buildings increased five percent over the last ten years. You can see two examples on either side of that spectrum here. Um, an example of a building that received energy agency improvements are Southdale, uh, Edina Liquor Store. We saw a reduction in emissions by thirty-four percent. Um, on the other side of that spectrum is Raymar Arena. The city added Raymar Field in the last ten years, and this is, um, one reason that emissions at the arena complex increased by more than a third, um, since its, uh, two thousand nine baseline. To me, this highlights the need for the city to focus not just on targeted efficiency projects, but to take a systematic approach. Um, and we are doing that with the implementation of energy management plans at underperforming facilities. There are two ways to lower our impact on the earth. Um, we can reduce our energy needs by improving efficiency, which I mentioned in the which I mentioned in the last slide, but we can also get our energy from clean sources. So the city is committed to renewable energy generation and is actively exploring ways to install more solar in Edina. Today, the city operates sources about a third of our electricity needs from solar subscriptions. And we offer a community solar garden to residents on our Public Works Building to help our residents access clean energy. And I believe that has 68 subscribers, yeah. So then there's waste. And while waste is a small portion of our emissions, waste management has a big impact on our ability to adapt to a changed climate. You might have tuned in to the city's town talk a few weeks ago on organics recycling, so I'll keep it short here. But organics recycling reduces our reliance on landfills, which emit methane gas, a potent greenhouse gas. Organics recycling results in compost, which can be used in place of fertilizers across the city of Edina, reducing our reliance on the limited supply of phosphorus and providing a non-toxic alternative to chemical treatments. This compost can also be used as a soil amendment to strengthen trees, pollinator habitat, and stream banks to help manage our waterways. And this moves us into adaptation. What, how is the city addressing some of our natural systems and the stresses that they are experiencing? So you can see the graph on the left, which highlights increased precipitation in the Twin Cities area in recent decades. This is from the draft Tenepin County Climate Action Plan and will certainly already does inform city work. The table on the right notes how the city is managing our urban forest. Overall, the city is planting more trees than it's removing, but this metric only considers city-owned trees, not privately-owned trees that cover much of the community. So how can we continue to move this work forward toward a more resilient city authorized a roughly 1 million annual fund dedicated to conservation and sustainability? You have the report detailing 2020 spending, and here I have a table looking at plans for this year, 2021. Financial resources are critical to meeting our sustainability goals. And we are continuing to look at ways to use this funding in a way that optimizes our return on investment. Beyond funding, we have policies either finalized or in the works to help the city partner with the community to reduce our impact on the planet and lived with the planet that we have today. The CAS fund supports policy implementation across the board, primarily on the mitigation side to date, looking at how we can increase efficiency. But we're looking at how, again, how to use those funds in a way that maximizes impact. So finally, what's next? Most excitingly, the city has kicked off the development of its first Climate Action Plan this month. The plan includes a baseline assessment of where the community is. It looks ahead at where Edina wants to go in its sustainability journey and what and who needs to be a part of that process. As you know, Pale Blue Dot is a partner in this process and is actively gathering data and bringing together a planning team now from community members to support broad community engagement beginning next month. And briefly, I'll just mention that the city is also bringing on a sustainability intern this summer to focus on data management and telling the story of resilient practices in Edina. And the city has also applied to host a Minnesota Green Corps member beginning this fall. So with that, I'd like to thank the council for listening this evening, and welcome any questions.
All right. Council members, questions or comments relative to Ms. Hancock's presentation? Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you. So tell me, what is the status of the Tree Summit that we talked about earlier, that several commissions wanted to talk about trees? And I know it's an important part of our sustainability ability, you know, strategy. Can you tell me where we're at on that?
Definitely.
Multiple years of discussions on the, on the Tree Summit. I think right now it's in the Park and Rec Department, working with the city forester. We've had an initial kickoff meeting with internal staff to see, you know, first it was looking at the current tree ordinance and then taking another step to see what possible changes we could do. And then from there, consider going back to the commissions at maybe next year, a later date. But right now it's with the Park and Rec Department.
Great, thank you. Great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member.
I, I had a. Thank you. On, and you, you could use Slide 6 as an example. And so my question is just, I want to make sure I understand how to interpret progress across the city. So for that particular slide, we said emissions change since 2009 was plus 5%. And then we gave the two examples, yep, there we go, of Edina Liquor being much more efficient after the upgrades and Braemar being a plus 36%. And so do we, I'm interpreting that to mean that across all of our city buildings, we measure emissions and we have a number, which is the plus 5% that encompasses all of the changes that we've made over that same timeframe? Is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay.
Yes. So we have baseline greenhouse gas emission numbers for each structure from the, it kind of varies, but from 2007 to 2009, we have these baseline figures. And then we can reassess those figures 10 years from now. In, in this case, I believe it's a decade difference and, and look at those, how have they changed? Those assessments occur more often than once a decade. And, and I'll mention that this is the kind of presentation I'd like to bring to the council on an annual basis so that we can look at these shifts more regularly and identify what strategies are moving us toward our goals and at what pace.
Okay. So then, so we could build a new structure that is highly inefficient, that would drive that number, as well as we could add another facility that is efficient, but it could still drive that number positively because we're adding additional capacity at the broader sense.
That's correct. Yeah, go ahead.
That's exactly it in this case. We added a whole nother facility, the Braemar Field. So, you know, we went from 100 buildings, 101. So that wasn't even in in the benchmark of 2007 or 2009. So just intuitively, the numbers are going to go up if you add a structure. So we should really be careful and look at what do we want to require when a new building comes on. And that's what the work session was tonight, is to look at those standards that we want to use for city-built new facilities. So I think we'd have a different number here if we just looked at all the existing from 2007 compared to today, because we've done a lot of lighting retrofits and stuff. So maybe that's a number we should also share with the council.
Yeah, that might be a good.
Of the existing, yeah, of the existing buildings, here's the improvement. And then make a note that we did add these buildings. So that's why overall, we're actually at plus 5%, but the existing buildings improved X percent. So maybe that's a thing we could share with the group.
To maybe make sure we're telling a more complete story, more holistic story, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Member Pierce, you raised a real interesting issue, and I think we knew when we responded to community demand for a building of a dome, the Braemar Arena, that it was going to be very energy inefficient, but it was something that really was required for the community to be able to do the kind, perform the kinds of activities they wanted to perform, both themselves and for their kids in that space. So we kind of swallowed hard and, and went ahead with the approvals. So I think you're on, you're on the track of a good measuring methodology, and that is to look at everything else but the, but the cloth dome, if you will, and see how we're doing.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions that I think, yeah, Members Staunton, other comments?
Just picking up on that, have we, have we given any thought? You know, I hear Ms. Hancock saying you'd like to make this instead of an every 10-year report, an annual report. Have we given any thought to some kind of a dashboard that could give this in almost real time so that we start to be able to see, you know, members of the public can see what we're doing, what trends, what directions, those kinds of things?
Yes, you are speaking my language, Member Staunton. That, we are developing an environmental performance dashboard now in coordination with the rollout of the Climate Action Plan. So we expect it would go live at around the time of the adoption of the plan. But I, I think Director Milner has hit on this message every time I've been a part of a council meeting, that we need to tell our story and, and share it publicly for both accountability and the opportunity to share what, what we've learned and our progress to date. So yes, we are looking at ways to make this information more transparent on a more regular basis.
One of the examples that I would cite that has been a huge success in the last year in a, in a, I guess unfortunate way, is our COVID-19 dashboard, which was really a collection of information and trying to in real time reflect that for folks in a variety of sliced and diced ways. And, and I think that was really a welcome bit of kind of transparency and letting people into what we're, what we're understanding is happening. So if we can do that on the sustainability stuff, that'd be terrific.
That's noted. Thank you, Member Staunton.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Member Staunton. And it sounds like you're headed in that direction, Ms. Hancock. And thank you, Ms. Hancock, for kind of getting us, getting our baselines figured out so we, we know where we're going. We've had a lot of good people that have served on the Energy and Environment Commission over the last 10-plus years since it was formed and have worked hard on trying to reduce greenhouse gases. And I was encouraged that, you know, our fleet numbers were down. When you look at those three categories that you measured, transportation, energy, use, and waste, that our transportation fleet was down, the greenhouse gas production from that fleet was down by 14%. That's a nice improvement to see. And then also on the waste side too, that we had made some pretty dramatic improvement. So if we can get to that energy use number now and then continue our, our efforts around our transportation, our vehicles used, I think we'll be seeing some nice progress here. So, and I'm sure you'll come up with some good direction for us.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland.
All right. Anything else for Ms. Hancock? All right. Then we're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And the first matter there, Affordable Housing Development Manager Stephanie Hawkinson has this matter. And this is something that we had a public hearing on a couple of weeks ago. Resolution 2021-14, which is potential approval of the proposed application for 2021 of the Urban Tenepin County Community Development Block Grant Program Funds, an authorization to enter into a sub-grantee agreement. Manager Hawkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. You pretty much gave my introduction. This is the continuation. The public hearing on Better Together Edina concluded on March 8th, and there were no comments. So I would like to proceed with the request that Resolution 2021-14 be approved.
All right. So you have no supplemental presentation you care to make tonight? Do any of the council members have any questions? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14, which encompasses those two areas that I mentioned earlier, and Manager Hawkinson is referred to. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14, which is our CDVG allocation on our block grant funds?
So moved.
Thank you, Members Staunton. Second?
Second.
Member Pierce, thank you. All right. Further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to potential approval of Resolution 2021-14, Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Resolution 2021-14 is adopted. Thank you, Clerk Hawkinson. Next matter is Resolution 2021-25, which was the potential approval of a conditional use permit with variance for Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church at 500 Blake Road South. Assistant Planner Chris Acker had that presentation a couple of weeks ago. We held the matter open for further public input. And is Ms. Acker with us?
I am.
All right. Ms. Acker, anything supplemental that you wish to add?
No, the public hearing was closed at noon on March 8th. Prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city received two comments on bettertogetheredina.org. No additional comments have been added since that time. There were no comments left via voicemail, no live testimony at the March 2nd City Council meeting. So the request for the conditional use permit with a 5.41-foot setback variance at 500 Blake Road for Shepherd of the Hills Church is now back before the City Council action. So I will turn that back to you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for Resolution 2021-25.
Thank you, Ms. Acker. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-25, which would be the issuance of a conditional use permit requested by Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church and the attendant variance that was necessary as well for their facility at 500 Blake Road?
So moved.
Member Anderson moves.
Second.
Member Jackson, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Clerk Allison, with respect to the motion as stated.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Resolution 2021-25, which grants a variance and approves a conditional use permit for Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church is approved. And then the next item in this portion of the agenda is presented by Heidi Lee, our Race and Equity Coordinator, has to do with potential of a bias offense response plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you for having me tonight. I am here to recommend the Bias Offense Plan, or excuse me, the Bias Offense Response Plan that was created and revised by the Human Rights and Relations Commission. So I will be sharing my screen for you.
All right, thank you. Your presentation is all set.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And so just to, to give you background information in regards to the Bias Offense Plan, the city of Edina Bias Offense Plan was adopted by City Council on May 5th of 1997 after it was drafted and proposed by the Human Rights Commission. Thereafter, the City Council has directed HRC to review the plan each year and provide recommendations as needed. The last revision on this particular plan was completed in 2017. In 2020, the HRC work plan charged from City Council is to the Bias Offense Plan review, create definitions to differentiate between bias incidents and bias offense within the state statute's definition, tracking and notification process for bias incident. And so in this next slide, I just want to highlight some of the changes that were made as part of the City Council's charge. So in the definitions, bias, bias offense, bias crime, and bias incident, definitions were added into the, the plan that was before you in the packet. It aligns with the state statute as the police chief had provided recommendations and worked with the working group to provide transparency as well as key definitions that align with the Minnesota state statute. So that those definitions that were added in there do align with the police chief. The notification process, another topic that was added for the HRC is that in addition to the chair being notified of the bias offense, a designated subcommittee of the HRC will also be part of the notification process. So that aligns with, there is a subcommittee from the HRC that does look at the bias offense if there is any revisions that need to be done. Going forward, they will also be part of the notification process, so it provides more transparency when there is a bias offense that occurs in Edina. The last piece, which is the tracking. So the data collection of bias offense will now be, as it's stated in the plan itself, the responsibility of the Race and Equity Coordinator, and an annual report will be provided to the HRC. Some other items that have not been added into the Bias Offense Plan, rather, it is um, rather it is set into the 2021 work plan for the HRC, is that the police chief will meet with the HRC every, at the end of every quarter and also provide, uh, quarterly updates if there is, um, any bias offense that occurs. Um, and so with that, uh, I also want to take note that there are, there were additional changes um, on this particular plan, um, whether it was, or it was to change, um, a word so that it would be more inclusive. So for example, there was a section there that in, indicated that the HRC would work with citizens. Um, the HRC, um, approved the change so that it would say the HRC would work with individuals. Um, so really thinking about that, this particular, uh, Bias Offense Plan, um, was looked at through the lens of the HRC, um, the Police Department, um, and then also going back to the whole committee of, um, the HRC for their vote as well. Um, so the staff recommendation is that the Bias Offense Plan provided in front of you, um, be recommended. Again, um, just highlighting the fact that the HRC, uh, subcommittee members worked with the police chief uh, to go ahead and provide more clarity on how bias offenses can be differentiated uh, through the different levels, whether it is bias incident or bias crime. Um, with this revision of the plan, it also allows for more ways for bias offense to be reported, um, whether it is through online, um, or if it is, uh, notified through, uh, the city manager or the police chief or, uh, different departments such as Parks and Rec. Um, and then it also provides a mechanism, uh, for response as well.
Thank you. Uh, anybody have questions for Heidi Lee? Comments? It was some nice work done here. Thank you for those good updates. Um, again, um, Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I, I like the policy incorporated in this. I have to say, I really don't like redefining the crime differently from state statutes. So I sent a, um, a draft to Manager Neil this afternoon. Um, basically not changing the effect of this document, but renaming some things. Um, so to look at this as a bias event, I created a new term, a bias event, which is, if you think of a, a Venn diagram, it's the big circle. And within that, there are two little sections. One is a bias offense, which is defined in state law, and then a bias incident, which is created in this document. Um, I, I, I think that we want to keep things as clean and clear as possible so that bias offense is defined as it is in state law. And then we've got bias incident is something that doesn't rise to the level of a crime. And then bias event is the big set of things that get reported and follow this policy. And that's, those are the changes that I made. Um, and I guess to me, that, that makes it easier to understand what's going on here. Um, the other question I have is, um, in the introduction, I would like to see more, um, more detail spelled out on what we're doing in this policy. Uh, I think this is a wonderful change. I really applaud it, but I'd like to have that spelled out a little bit about the addition here in 2021, um, that, that we're doing. I, I thought it was a little confusing to read this introduction and not know, um, that, that it was being changed. So I'd like to see a little more narrative there. Um, so those are my comments and questions.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Here, Neil?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I think that we can take, uh, the suggestions from Councilmember Jackson and bring them back to, uh, a staff review, both on the admin side with Heidi and, uh, and also in the Police Department and also our commission. I think commission meets next week?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? So we can run this by, because there's a lot of people that have had their fingers on this document. We want to make sure that, uh, they have a chance to see what's being proposed. And we'll, we'll take care of that and bring it back to the council, um, at your next meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Member Pierce?
Yeah, I, just a, um, a more general question. And I typically ask this question if someone asks to make changes to something that's being presented, especially like this. Um, so the question though is, what was the original intent? Uh, with what was drafted and proposed in the context of there being a state statute, um, that already existed? So what, what were we trying to accomplish by, um, by changing it?
Sure. Uh, thank you for that question. So one of the reasons why, um, that particular change to be able to differentiate, um, the, what is a bias offense or what is considered a bias incident, um, is really, was sparked, um, in 2019, um, when there was a, a lot of graffiti, uh, with swastikas. And then there was, uh, I think, uh, differentiating, as far as what was considered a bias crime or that rose to the level. And so, um, you know, folks were asking, um, why was a person not prosecuted? Um, and I think just to be able to provide clarity on what is considered an incident that does not rise to the level of crime. Um, and this was one of the reasons why they wanted to be able to differentiate that because there was, um, definitely feedback from HRC, um, as well as, uh, feedback from the community members of why there were not, there was an action taken. Um, and so we wanted just, they wanted to be able to have that in a policy.
Thank you.
Member Staunton?
So following up on that, um, that was actually one of the questions I was going to ask is just as a practical matter, how would the graffiti incidents, we had some at Pamela Park, and then we had one, I think, on a private fence over in the southwest part, or, or maybe it was the southeast portion of the community. Um, and so you're saying that those might be an incident as opposed to an offense?
That, yes. So, um, with, with the, with the, um, definitions that are listed on the current plan that is in front of you, um, under the umbrella or kind of the overarching, um, is what, uh, Member Jackson talked about is the, uh, in, or the event. So, um, it's, the offense is what has occurred. And under the offense, it can be categorized whether it is an incident or a crime. Um, and so with those, I, with those, um, events that occurred or those incidents that occurred, um, there wasn't any, um, movement forward with the folks that had, um, or the victims, um, to move forward to give their information to the HRC. Um, so that then in itself, uh, creates more, um, more reporting challenges, uh, because it doesn't go any further than a bias incident.
Sure. So, so then what, I think I can pretty easily imagine what happens if we have a bias offense. There's, you know, it's run through a prosecution decision-making tree. But what about a bias incident? What happens then?
Um, then that is when the notification process would take place with the chair, uh, city, city manager Neil, uh, the police chief, myself and the, um, subcommittee of the HRC to discuss what is a community response, uh, to the incident itself. Um, so looking at Appendix B that you have in your packet, um, it would be also taking a look at the community, uh, resource network, um, and what, uh, what sort of supports that that person may need.
And can you describe a little bit? Because I did see that community resource network in there. Can you describe a little bit about what that is and how that would work?
Um, it would be really looking at what is, uh, what is the current situation? Um, if, if there are supports, um, that we are able to work with, for instance, a school district. Um, so looking at the, the age of the person, um, is there ways that we can work with another partner, um, in the community to provide support? Um, is it looking at education, uh, pieces that we, that the HRC may be able to institute, um, so that there's given more awareness? So it really depends on the situation as far as what the community resource can provide. Um, but that is a, a discussion that the subcommittee of, uh, the HRC as well as the chair would, would, um, have a conversation about.
And might that include reaching out to the victim or the target of such an incident?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and that, reaching out would also depend on, uh, data privacy. So if the, um, victim does provide that information for that to be given to the HRC, certainly, uh, the HRC would reach out to the victim.
And are there any, um, other kind of community networks or organizations that we should be connecting with to make sure that we have an opportunity to reach out, even when we might not know? You know, there might, it be, might not be an individual victim or target, but there could be a, a kind of segment of the community, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Who, are we, you know, working with, um, networks or other folks who might be good conduits to folks in that particular segment of the community?
Y- yeah, I'll take you back just to one that Heidi mentioned earlier. In, it was 2019 when we had this, this spree of, of swastikas and backfiring things spray painted in places. Uh, we sat down with the Jewish Community Relations, uh, Council, uh, and some of their staff and talked about what could we do? Um, how should we be interpreting some of what we were seeing? And got some good advice from them.
So I think-
Is that an example of what you?
Yeah, and, but it begs the question then about nurturing those connections and trying to create, make sure we're aware of who might be good, you know, folks to reach out to in terms of organizations or other people who represent various members of the community. So that we're building that network so that when we need it, we know who to go to and say, you know, how should we deal with this instead of just assuming that we have the right answer?
I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you've got me thinking about this too. The, the lawyers in the crowd are looking at, uh, the language. Um, so when I look up at the definitions and I see a, a definition for bias, bias offense, bias crime, which we haven't talked too much about, uh, which I would infer means, uh, an actual criminal conviction or just a charge of, uh, of criminality related to bias. Do you know, Ms. Lee, what that would be?
Yep. So, um, after investigation, it would, it would rise to the level of criminality, um, after the investigation with, with the Police Department.
And so it would be a charge of a criminal offense of bias? All right. So then when you get down into the purposes, the only purpose that's addressed down there are bias offenses, which are defined up above, but are distinct from crimes of bias. So do we have, should we have a response plan in mind with respect to actual circumstances where there is a crime of bias? As opposed to just a response put together with respect to offenses, bias offenses?
Is, is that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think, um, the way, the way it's defined, it does that. Um, it's just that it's confusing to use offenses an umbrella term when it's also a criminal term. So that's, I, I think though that it does, um, does have a response. Right now, there's currently a response for the crimes, but not for the incidents. And this is adding a response for the incidents, if I am correct, Ms. Lee.
That is correct, Member Jackson.
Yeah, that, that's inherently true. I think that if there was a criminal offense charge, there would be an obvious criminal prosecution taking place. But I'm also wondering if that requires some kind of response plan related to us, even though a charge has been lodged? That's the question that I have. I guess it's subsumed in there. But maybe the response plan we have is, is appropriate. Anyway, as we look at this, has, uh, Attorney Kendall looked at this as well, Ms. Lee?
Um, no, he has not.
Okay. I'm just wondering if he should take a look at it as well? As long as we're going to send it back to staff, the, for you to look at it one more time based on, I think Member Jackson's on a, on a good track here in terms of sort of the, uh, umbrella uh, concept with the individual pieces of the pie chart, so to speak, I guess is a better way to put it.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we're going to hold this matter over. And then you'll bring it back to us, Ms. Lee, when you think it's appropriate?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Well, thanks for bringing it this evening. Just any other comments?
Yeah.
On Member Pierce?
I do think, as you take it back, um, I would urge you not to lose the intent behind what you're trying to accomplish. Um, I, 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 there's definitely, um, I can appreciate that this is, there is a legality nature to this. Um, but I do want to encourage you not to lose the intent as you start to look at it. And if, um, we need to wrestle around with language to make sure that we cover the intent, then we should do that. Um, but, but don't shy away from doing that if you feel like, uh, you're getting feedback that's starting to take you away from the original intent, uh, that you started with.
Yeah, but I think that's a fair and appropriate comment that none of us intend that. We want you to be as broad as possible. Um, but just make sure that we've got ourselves covered to, to address every kind of bias that we want in a response plan. So, okay. And then I think that, uh, the, the Member Jackson makes a good point too. And in, in the introduction, we're really talking about an update or an amendment of a plan. And it should be clear when we amended it or updated it.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate the feedback.
All right. Good. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
And then we're going to move on to, uh, commission correspondence. I don't think anything, we, we got that in our packets electronically. Uh, I don't have an aviation noise update from, um, uh, NOK Committee Member, former Councilmember Brindle. Do you have anything, Manager Neil?
Uh, nor do I have, but I will say that, uh, in our absence, there was a, a much slimmed down, uh, annual noise, uh, conference like there typically is at, at, uh, National League of Cities Conference every year. So we will be getting some information from that and I'll share that with council members.
All right. Very good. Uh, then let's move on to, uh, council comments. And Member Anderson, you want to lead us off?
I will. Thank you. Um, uh, one note, and we've seen some, uh, correspondence back and forth in the course of the last week, um, relative to tree clearing vegetation process along Hillary Lane, uh, right, right around the golf course, also, uh, close to the residential areas. I, I'm, I'm back and forth through there consistently. And I've noted over the last several weeks what I have considered to be an outstanding job, uh, by Public Works and I think directed by, uh, Park and Rec, um, in terms of clearing out a ton of buckthorn. But more importantly, the, the, a ton of belled trees, it was, really looked terrible through there. All of a sudden you go through, there's a good clean look. I can see that, uh, uh, we have a, a far better opportunity. I don't know what the final plan is in terms of runoff management in there, uh, whether there's going to be any dredging or clearing out. I, I assume that's part of it. But, um, it's, uh, I, I think that's really shaping up. And I'm certain there'll be some landscaping that follows, some replanting and so on. And, uh, it's, it's very impressive. I feel pretty good about it. And I'm sure that anybody driving through there would have the, a similar kind of reaction.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, Member Pierce?
Uh, nothing from me tonight.
Okay. Just going across the top of the screen here, at least my screen, Member Staunton?
Yeah, the one thing I wanted to raise, we had a great discussion at our, at our last meeting about, um, the role the city can play in, in making sure we're facilitating vaccinations as quickly as possible for as many and as broad a, a cross-section of folks in our community as we can. And, and I was really struck by that as I reflected on it. Um, it's really, you know, we're getting, a lot of us are getting emails and, and other reach outs from various sources that kind of bring that to us electronically. But I'm reminded that not everybody necessarily is plugged into that same network. And I, so I'm interested in continuing to hear and to push on the efforts that we're making to try to reach out and make sure that everybody gets a chance, um, as quickly as possible to be in this network. Because I think it's, on the whole, there's a really positive thing happening here, but it needs to happen for everybody. And so I, I don't know, uh, Manager Neil, if we're talking about doing a regular update from Jeff Brown or from- Jeff Brown or from our colleagues and Mr. Kelly in Bloomington. But but it would be good, I want to try and front burner that a little bit just so that we're lifting up the efforts we're making to really reach out to folks.
Yeah, we do intend to do that on a more regular basis, probably even a monthly basis. We may not always be able to get Nick Kelly to participate in that. But but Jeff Brown is is doing a great job and can share the newest data that he gets because he's connected.
Yeah, and I'd be interested in hearing what, you know, if Heidi is connected with that whole effort because I think we, you know, it goes hand in hand with our comments about the bias offense stuff. You know, we need to develop networks of people who can reach out to their communities, small cities, communities that, you know, to invite them in and make sure we're getting the message out. And if necessary, I know there are some creative ideas about bringing the vaccinations to people if they can't get to the vaccinations. But I think that we'll really be pleased if we can we can do that well. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Very good point. And then Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we had, the snow was gone for a few days and we had that rain and all of our drains got covered with leaves again. So for folks who have adopted a drain, it's time to get out and start cleaning them up. That sends nutrients into our water streams. It then builds algae and everything. So if we can keep those drains clean, it's great. And I appreciate the neighbors I've seen out picking up garbage. It's lovely to see that commitment to our neighborhoods. So that's it.
All right, thank you. A couple of things for me. We had a work session this evening and for members of the community who are listening. And now a couple of the members of the Flood Task Force that we're working on issues down in the Morningside neighborhood, Greg Lincoln and Michael Platter were with us. And it just reminded me of all the great volunteers we have in Edina that work in various task forces or on existing commissions. And it's just, we're really blessed in that way. We've got so much good guidance from all those folks. So thanks to, in this particular situation, to Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Platter. We had a regional council mayor's meeting on Monday and it was an interesting meeting around the issue of mental health and the challenges that people are having with mental health as a result of the pandemic. If it wasn't enough of a challenge before the pandemic, it really has been brought home strongly, I would say. And I'm sure Jeff Brown could speak to this if he were with us. But we had the EMS chief from Northfield Hospital with us, Sue Abder Holden, who is the Executive Director of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and then Jen Malcolm, MDH Commissioner, talking about the pressures on people here from a mental health standpoint. So it just made me think that, Manager Neil, to the extent that that the council should be knowing in a little bit more detail some of the challenges we're facing through our affiliation on Bloomington Public Health for some of our residents, if there are things that we should be contemplating. I think especially with what we know is coming now with the Rescue Act and money's coming to Edina, which I think you're going to talk a little bit about in your remarks. And maybe I'll hold these, the rest of these comments over on that topic until we get to your presentation. But I think if if whatever is coming Edina's direction as part of this recovery plan for the public sector, which is quite unusual really to have a plan that in part covers the public sector, that if we fill our budget hole with respect to operating expenses and lost revenues and we have funds remaining and we start having those conversations around what funds remain, we should be thinking about mental health as one of those areas of of discussion, I think, based on the conversation we had. And then on that same issue, I had a meeting on Friday because I'm the vice chair of the Standing Committee on Transportation Communications for the U.S. Conference of Mayors. There were 18 mayors that are involved in either chair or vice chair capacity with various committees of the U.S. Conference of Mayors in a call on Friday around what's been dubbed, at least so far, stimulus command centers. And the idea evolved from a conversation between Greg Fisher, the mayor of Louisville, who's the current president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Eric Garcetti, the mayor of Los Angeles, and then a guy named Bruce Katz, who used to be at Brookings, who's one of the one of the big thinkers around on these topics. And then Aaron Thomas from Accelerator for America, which Garcetti helped create a few years ago, which is involved in a lot of infrastructure work. And this conversation was was the same amongst these really 18 big city mayors and just a couple of us from smaller towns. And, but just happened to be in these committee positions. And I think the conversation there too is evolving over the next 60 days. And I'll report back to the council on that. But the question there was, after we get done fish, filling these budget holes that every city has, to the extent that there's funds remaining, is there something we want to be talking about regionally in terms of strengthening our region, making it more sustainable, working together to create greater resiliency in the future? None of us know the answers to any of those questions yet. But it's something we can all start thinking about a little bit in terms of working together to create more sustainability and resiliency over time. And then Mayor, not Mayor, Manager Neil and I had a couple of conversations with legislators on our local area sales tax bill in the period since we last met. And we met with, I think, with some success on at least a couple of the matters that we have involving local option sales tax. And I'll let Manager Neil speak to that a little bit further if he wants to as well. But I'm encouraged, at least on the House side, that on the local option sales tax, the so-called LOS, the acronym for local option sales tax, we're making some decent progress. And then we'll be switching over to the Senate side as well fairly soon. And Senator Carla Nelson from Rochester will be, I think, chairing that tax committee. And they've certainly used local option sales tax over the years in Rochester. And we get some good talking points, talking point ideas from the mayor of Rochester. And so we'll be prepared, I think, on the Senate side as well to address that issue appropriately. So I'm going to move now to Manager Neil and he can talk about a couple of different topics that he wants to address. Exceptions on public hearing policy and then the allocation of federal fiscal assistance. Manager Neil?
Did we miss Councilmember?
Anderson, did I miss Member, no?
No, okay.
No, we got, we got everybody, I think. Yeah, I went across the top row first and then jumped to Member Jackson and-
Okay.
I think there's only five of us on the council, Manager Neil.
Which still is, yes, right. Count to five.
I got, I got spring allergies. I could have miscounted.
I have plenty too. I think I'm good with five. We've got, I've got two things I want to run down with you. First is a proposed exception to our public hearing policy. I mean, we've adopted this new practice of of having the public hearing followed by an extended, followed by the two week period, sometimes a three week period, and then having the council make a decision. We have a situation come up with a new restaurant, Yummy. They wish, we have this two, extra two week, well, now it's a, it's a full two week break. We have the extra week because of the way our meeting schedule falls. They were planning to be open on April 1st. They wish they had their liquor license by April 1st, but they but they won't because of the way that our meetings fell and the way that the the date for their submission fell. It didn't, it didn't coordinate very, very well. So we aren't going to be able to have their public hearing until the 6th of April. And they will not be open then, well, you won't make a decision on their liquor license until April 20th, which puts them almost a month behind in terms of syncing up their liquor license issuance with the opening of the restaurant. And so I wanted to ask the council if there is, I have talked with police and with the city clerk about this. From a staff perspective, we don't have any, we don't have any concerns about granting an exception to that practice for this particular item. We don't typically have people that testify against or even for restaurant liquor licenses. I wanted to bring this to you to see if you have feelings about it either way.
I'm interested in Member Staunton's comments, but Attorney Kendall, David Kendall, any thoughts? I'll go to Member Staunton first.
Well, I was going to say that I think, I think we should think about this not just in this context, but in general, if staff thinks that an item might be appropriately decided the same night we have the public hearing. I think that's fine so long as we tee it up in advance that way so that people who want to weigh in know when that deadline will happen. And then we could always, if if we decide that we need more information or something like that, we could always continue it further and and ask for more input. But in these kinds of situations, I guess I'd be, I'd be happy to have staff say, this is one of those that for whatever the reason is in that circumstances, we're going to try and do on a shorter leash. And and but make sure you tee it up in advance so there's no confusion about when the public hearing ends. That would be my take on it.
Okay.
Attorney Kendall, any reservations about this from a legal standpoint?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I couldn't get my my video started and my mute unmuted. But I have no reservations. There's no legal requirement that you have to have this delay. You're legally permitted to have a public hearing and then make a decision that same night. So I agree with Member Staunton, as long as it's clear to the public what your procedure is so there's no confusion. You have the option to proceed either way.
Other thoughts from other council members? Member Anderson?
Yes, thank you. I guess my only question is, is this a one off consideration? I mean, we're talking about this one applicant tonight. Are we talking about amending going forward, the possibility of fast tracking, the occasional consideration? I think that's really what Member Staunton was beginning to drive at too.
Normally, normally, we have begun the practice of giving enough notice to to everyone who needs a public hearing that this is, this is the pace at which this happens. This is the deadline for submission. This one is, is just has a quirk to it. It had a quirk in the schedule to it and that's what's happening tonight. This is the first time we've proposed, staff have proposed to you that we grant an exception to this policy. Otherwise, we're trying to be pretty strict about it going forward.
And so how does the timing affect this particular applicant? I mean, if we can, is it possible to move fast enough to justify a change in protocol?
It would make a two week difference to them in terms of being open with a liquor license or being open without a liquor license.
Okay, thank you.
And is there a fundamental requirement that we have a public hearing related to the issuance of a liquor license? Even though they might clear the administrative hurdles of? Okay.
Yep.
All right. So in terms of creating potential category, I mean, I could see where, for me personally, if they cleared the administrative hurdles and the criminal background checks, so to speak, we, I'd be comfortable dealing with those matters as we come out of the pandemic, you know, related to the food service industry, the restaurant industry, the same night, you know, have the public hearing and act on it the same evening. Again, to Member Staunton's point and Attorney Kendall's point that as long as we notice it up in advance, that that's what's intended.
Okay.
But I do, just to be clear, I do think the default should continue to be this double, you know, this deciding at the next meeting after we hold the public hearing and extending the public hearing.
Agreed.
Yeah. I think when we go back to meeting in person, we can, it seems like this is, the method we're using now is particularly important around land use decisions. But with respect to like some of the matters we had before us this evening, like the CDBG funding request that we held over, I'm not sure if I think that policy, you know, we couldn't do it the old way, I guess, to be to act on it the same night. So I'd want to have a conversation with the council about what we think is appropriate to hold, to continue this existing process with, as opposed to what we might go back to with respect to items that require a public hearing. That's a conversation, right?
Right, and and we're not, staff is not trying to move you off of that practice. This, we're bringing to you just this, a very specific instance here where we could help somebody. And if we can, that we'd like to, so.
I think as Member Staunton's pointed out in the past, this is a, one of the discoveries during the pandemic is that this is a, is a probably a better due process mechanism than we used to have when we met the law, especially with respect to land use issues.
So I'm hearing that it might, it's, it's probably okay for us to notice it up like this. If something emerges during the public hearing, you can always delay it. But we'll set it up like that and we'll move it forward.
All right.
At your April 6 meeting. The second, the second item is a process for allocating the new federal financial assistance. You know, one of the things that happens during, that has happened a number of times during the pandemic, whenever it's been, whether it's been the governor issuing a new executive order or whether it's the federal government providing assistance, financial assistance to cities, there's always, there's oftentimes a big announcement. And and then for days later, there's, there's the massaging of the announcement and figuring out actually what happened. And so we are still in that process with with regards to the American Rescue Plan and and not just in terms of how we can spend the money, but how much money we are going to get in Edina. We fall, we fell into a niche brand of city with regards to this number where we weren't a direct allocation CDBG city, but we also weren't a small outstate city. And those cities, including the urban core cities, they know how much they're getting. We, as a, as a city of around 50,000 in Hennepin County, there's a number of us, St. Louis Park, Plymouth, Minnetonka, Maple Grove. We don't know yet precisely how much we have been allocated. The Representative Phillips office is working with our cities and they're still trying to figure that part out. But we will know that soon. We're also beginning to work with our other cities and the League of Minnesota Cities to figure out what the parameters are. So the Treasury has, Department of Treasury has not issued guidance yet on on how the money can be spent. We know for, we know some of the details are emerging that we cannot use it to to give tax breaks with or to buy down taxes. We have to spend it by 2024. But there, there are bound to be a number of other parameters around these funds. So we have some time. And what I was, what I'm proposing to you is that we use this time to to do some engagement in the community and get some input about how how the community thinks that we could best allocate, say, $5 million in the community for maximum benefit to the local economy. I've asked Heidi and MJ to prepare an engagement process that that we could take a look at and that we've got some time where we could execute that and still have plenty of time before the money begins to actually come into our possession. So my, my proposal to you tonight is that we, that we work on that. Then when that engagement process is designed, I'll bring it back and I'll, I'll, I'll share it with you. You can approve it. Staff will then implement it. We'll gather ideas from the community. We'll bring those ideas back to you as a council and you'll make the final decision on how we allocate the money. And I think that process could take a couple of months, but it's, I think it's worth taking a little bit of time to to do this in a, in a smart and productive way.
So when we got the CARES Act funding, we had to act rather quickly. And first of all, we had to wait for it to move from the state to the county down to us, as I recall. all, we had to wait for it to move from the state to the county down to us, as I recall.
Right.
And then we, we couldn't use it for any revenue losses. We could only allocate it to expenses.
Right.
Or operating losses, I should say, but not revenue losses. And now we've got, and I think we know fundamentally, and you've just mentioned that, I think what I've heard is, or understand is that we've got at least three years to figure out what to do with it. But what I wanted to do is get a bit of a clarification from you right now. And my, my first instinct was that the council would want to look at, based on the data that you and the finance department supply, and assuming we can use it to recover lost revenues from having to have all of our enterprise facilities closed, that the first level of allocation would be with respect to operating losses, if we still have some, and revenue losses, assuming we can allocate it to revenue losses, and then we would figure out what to do with the balance of it. But from a fundamental fiscal standpoint, it seemed to me important to deal with those issues at the council level before we move on into the community, to talk about what to do with any balance we might receive. Is that what you were saying?
That is not what I'm saying.
I thought that's what you were, I didn't think that's what you were saying.
That's, that's maybe how I would want to spend it, but I think to a large degree, we, that is how we used our first round of CARES funding. We, we allocated some of that money toward emergency rental assistance and emergency business assistance and some to the hospital, of course. But for the most part, we kept that, that money, and we paid ourselves, we paid ourselves, which has the benefit, of course, that we're, we're paying our internal costs with federal funds. That has the benefit of providing a benefit, a fiscal benefit to everybody, every taxpayer in the city. What I'm proposing with this, with this federal funding is that we get some ideas from the community about how they think, how they think this money could best help or provide economic boost in the community. And that we bring those ideas to you. We may, we may not be able to do them because they may be on the, outside the parameter list. And you may decide that you'd like to be more prudent or more conservative in, in how you use the money, but at least you'd have some input from the community about what, what ideas they might have for us.
All right. But in that context, I guess I'd want to know what our revenue losses were as part of that calculation.
Yep. And we will have that more precisely very soon with our audit.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Yeah, I, I support this approach. And I, one thing that I feel remiss about when we went through this the last time, in part because we were moving so quickly, was I, if I had it to do over again, I would have wanted to partner more with our schools. And that's somebody that I'd like to make sure we're connecting with to, to see. Now, they may be getting some support, too, but I think we should be thinking about how we can together leverage whatever assistance we're getting in the best way to help both us and the schools. And the schools are such a huge part of the community that I want to make sure that doesn't get lost this time.
That's a good observation. I think the, the school districts around the country are getting a significant amount of money, but whether that, whether that accomplishes what we'd want to see accomplished in our community, I think we should be mindful of that, too. I think it's a very good point.
Well, are there maybe ways for us to partner, collaborate in ways that fit the money together well, too, and make it stretch further?
And another thing I think we don't have to worry about is if, you know, the issue of infrastructure, because we were told in this meeting last Friday that coming on the heels of the American Rescue Plan will be the next plan, and that is to put together a transportation infrastructure bill that'll be $1 trillion to $4 trillion. So I think we can, we can, we can kind of park any ideas we'd have about transportation infrastructure. Broadband may be another issue, but Member Pierce?
So can you just maybe repeat the process you're going to use to ensure that we're getting input from the community? Because I appreciate Councilmember Staunton's point. In general, I've always felt like if you want to know what the needs of the community are, you ask the people that are closest to the need. And so just how, how would we go about ensuring that we're talking to the right organizations, if you will, the right nonprofits or what have you in the community?
Councilmember Pierce, members of council, I'm coming to you at the earliest stage of this process, where I'm gonna, I'm telling you, we, we want to put together a process that we will then share with you. So we've got two, two of our folks who are, are well-versed at that skill set, Heidi Lee and MJ Lehman, are working on this right now. They've been working on it for a couple of weeks, putting together some, some ideas about how to engage folks and, and what approach to use and, and how we funnel that information back through staff and then onto council. So that's yet to come. I just want to give you a preview that we're working on that. And we, and we realize and acknowledge that the council really is the body that's going to make the final decision about how we allocate this. And I'm suggesting to you, you're going to have a, a pretty good say over how we actually go out and ask people about it, too.
No, that's fair. Thank you. I definitely support that approach.
Okay, good. Well, I, you know, I'm confused, too, about what the numbers are going to show, but the last spreadsheet I saw had us getting a direct allocation of between 9.5 and 11.5 million. But I don't know if that's even accurate information anymore because I, I can't remember if it was the Mayor of Plymouth or Lakeville, somebody that is a larger city than we are, and their number was lower than that, they thought. So I don't know where the numbers are going to shake off.
And that goes to part of, part of what I said earlier, that, that the number for our kind of city, for a city of 50,000 within a metro county, is fluctuating. And I would, and I would tell you, it's fluctuating down. It's probably going to be closer to five than it is to eight. That's what we're hearing now. So somewhere in the $100, $100 per capita, somewhere in that, somewhere in that line. That's the number we've gotten from Representative Phillips' office. But, but yeah, so we're, as we continue to refine that, we'll, we'll share that with council for sure.
Okay.
The final thing, Mayor, you asked if I would comment a little bit more on local option sales tax. As you noted, it, it sounds like we're having some success in, in making it into the House side of the, of the sales tax or the tax bill. That was, that's a big first hurdle to get, to get over. That's important. So the next hurdle is, of course, in the Senate. There's no Senate bill yet, but we learned today from League of Minnesota Cities, Gary Carlson reached out to a number of us who are following this issue and, and said that we should begin to look for the Senate to have some preliminary hearings and discussions on this the end of March. So we will, we will be more seriously involved in this in a week.
Yeah. So we've been through the committee. We've testified at the committee on the House side, and we've, we've had a good conversation. They got one of the key members in the House Tax Committee. So, and Representative Edelson tells us that we're making good progress. So that's, that's a positive sign, as Manager Neil says. So, anything else?
Nope. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And that prompted anything from other council members they want to inquire about? Yeah.
Not an inquiry, but I just, I had a thought balloon here. It was a year ago tomorrow that was our last council meeting in the chambers. And that was one, Mayor Hovland, that you will recall that you and I and former Member Fisher attended, and Member Staunton, although that was St. Patrick's Day, too, but Member Staunton was on a remote basis, and as was Member Brindle. And I, just while we were sitting here, I thought, man, that's a year. And I'm not sure what the, what the time window might be going forward, but I know that everyone, and everyone in the community as well, looks forward to getting back to business as semi-normal. The manager's hand went up, so maybe there's an update here.
Well, well, thank you, Councilmember Anderson. And I, and I meant to get back to this point, too. As I mentioned earlier, we, when after the executive orders are issued by the governor's office, there's also, there's a lot of huddling with his staff and, and League of Cities staff and other city staff, trying to figure out where the details come together. And this is what we're working on, too. You know, he, he's made some, some pretty significant relaxation of restrictions, and we're trying to get a sense of what that means for us operationally. And so we're working with the League of Cities on that. And as soon as we have some definitive information about when, you know, when we can reopen, when we have to go back to, to live meetings and, and other sort of important details in your lives as elected officials, we'll share those with you as soon as we can.
All right. All right. Very good. Any, any COVID update, Manager Neil, with respect to the kids? I understand there's a segment on Channel 5 News about the COVID uptick in the educational system, and they used both OLG and I think the high schools as examples of where there's been an uptick in COVID.
Yeah, I've heard that, too.
Okay. All right. Anything else, folks? Is there a motion to adjourn? 9:04, you won't even know what to do the rest of, with the rest of the evening.
Yes, I will.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We got a motion in second to adjourn the council meeting. Any further discussion? Dirk Allison, would you call roll with respect to adjourning the Tuesday, March 16, 2021, meeting of the Edina City Council?
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Jackson?
Hi.
Councilmember Pierce?
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. We stand adjourned.
Happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow, everybody.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I know it was a great session on Saturday.